Yes on issue one. And after I did my presentation, several other teachers got up from the floor and gave their presentations. And I was very happy to say that CFT came and has endorsed issue one. So it's really important because that came out of the Child Poverty Collaborative. The whole point is we've got children living in poverty because they don't have parents that have jobs that can provide them a livelihood that's not in poverty. So next week, we are going to have Julie Peet from the UC Economic Center. Her topic will be the effect on our economy of the Republican things. All the stuff that they're doing, what the effect on our economy is going to be. So that's what we have for next week. And now Alberta, I will turn this over to you. That's Alberta. And my first announcement is going to be ladies and gentlemen, John Rapap.
Hello. 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 I don't know what this is for. I think it's this way. Oh, I just want to remind you, I think I have to apologize. It's been about a month or so since I showed our stand with, you know, the immigrants in this shirt is used to help our local immigrants who need all the help you can get, you know, to get their stay here and not be deported and all the bad things. So if you did order one, because honest to goodness, I lost the list. So if anybody did order one, I've got large, three large ones. And I'll be back in the back. I just want to tell you about it. But the money, they're $20, but the $20 goes to all the people that have to help the immigrants, such as lawyers, people that are bilingual to get them their paperwork done. And there's a lot of people involved and also to house them, you know. Where I go to church, we put one family in and we house them and get them jobs, you know, that they can do. So it's an important thing. So if you want one, let me know. I'll put us, I'll be back there where the shirt, where the tee is. And then you can put a little piece of paper down it. But if you did order one, let me know. Thanks.
There we go. And here comes Bill Messer with the microphone.
Since we don't have anybody coming to speak against issue one, I thought I'd do 30 seconds for you. It's horrible. It's going to cause criminals and drug dealers and rapists to be released all over the streets. Hide your women, hide your children. And what else, what else is wrong with it? I guess that's about it. And unemployed guards, no money for prisons and all kinds of other things, all of which is untrue.
Do they buy t-shirts?
Can they buy t-shirts? You can have my sweater if you want, if you're really into it. Okay.
I want Mike to show his sign. Mike found a sign on the street. You need to see this, guys. Stop the insanity. No on one.
Issue nine is children's services.
Children's, no on children's services.
It says, "Stop the insanity. Don't vote for children's services." How long can you go?
I'm for insanity then.
Up with insanity. There we go. Yes, there we go. Done. Tonight, there's a candidates meeting at the Clinton Recreation Center at 7:00. And several candidates who are representatives will be there and they will discuss the issues. And tomorrow night, the Women's City Club is having a forum at the First Unitarian Church on Linton Street about all the city charter amendments. So if you live in the city and you're not sure about what to do with the charter amendment, you should go tonight or tomorrow night. Both of them are at 7:00. And anybody who's welcome. Back to Mike. Here's Mike.
Newt Gingrich came out for issue one. I don't know how many you saw that. I put some articles, I put his article on some of the tables and there's some on the bar over there too about issue one.
Okay, wait, wait. Lots of announcements here. I have a request from Planned Parenthood that they're looking for people to canvass. And I gave one to Peter and he can put it in there. But they're working out of the letter carriers' union on Colrain. And they do it Tuesday, Wednesday, Thursday evening and Saturday and Sunday midday. But I've got, if anybody's interested in canvassing for them, because apparently they've got some issues in Ohio after the election that they're going to try to ram through that really affect women's choice. And they're in the assembly now in Ohio. There are terrible things going on. We need, we need to really be careful about what's going on in our own legislature. Yes, Laura, Dr. Laura.
President Trump was in Cincinnati in Warren County to give a rally in Warren County. Steve Shabbat actually appeared in public and spoke for 45 seconds.
Yeah, amazing.
I think, I think it was trying to prove that he can't speak words more than I approve this message. In any case, in any case, there is going to be a debate that's going to be broadcast on ABC between all the candidates for the congressional offices in CD1 and CD2 at 7:00 PM. It will be broadcast on ABC. And I encourage everybody to watch it in case you don't believe that Steve Shabbat can actually talk. That's, oh, that's tomorrow, tomorrow night, 7:00 PM.
People have got to get in there. My goodness. Just, just, does it work now? I don't see it.
I'll explain. I'll explain how these things work.
Yeah, the way those things work is they're karaoke mics. They won't work through our system. They're not wireless mics. They work out of a speaker off, out of the bottom. And you have to turn the volume all the way up and put them right up against your mouth like that.
Like this.
Our own mics work. So go for our own mics.
Bring it here and I'll show you. Turn the light out and...
How many people, let me just do a short survey here. How many people have already voted? How many people, oh, you guys are good. We've got some people. Thank you. Thank you very much for going and voting. Go ahead, John.
I just wanted, I heard, saw this on television when Steve Shabbat spoke in Lebanon. This is what he said, this was on TV. He said, I'll try to remember the word, the word he says. What's the difference between a Republican and a Democrat changing a light bulb? And he said, the difference is that all the Democrats would just talk about it and live in the dark when the light, when the light goes on. That's what he said. I was, I was the only thing he said on TV, that the Democrats live in the dark and they wouldn't know how to change a light bulb.
Yeah, but we know how to read.
He's using whale lamps. I don't know how to vote.
Hopefully, we know how to vote. Now, on your table, I have put a last copy of, we're getting close to the election. If you've already voted, you don't need to see this. But that is a blank copy of your sample ballot, at least for my precinct. Now, I did it for my precinct. You can go to your own computer and print this off from the Board of Elections. On the backside of it, where this, on the backside, he's got, he's got it. On the backside, he gives the internet address of the Board of Elections, boe.milton.co.org. Right. And an information place called vote411.org. But I highly recommend that you actually print one of these guys off for yourself. Go to your own computer, print one off for yourself. Go in with your own people, all made up. And then you don't have to kind of wonder about which one is, this is the Democrat, which one of this is the Republican, especially for your judges. You really need to know your judges. We've had, let's do our little quiz here. B, B, C, Z. B, B, C, Z are four of our judges. Now, who's B, B, and who's C and Z? Berdon, Proust, Uzi, Maryland Zayas. Some, you guys are going to go, you guys are going to know, yes. You can meet them at the Board of Elections. They are there. To approve, yeah. And I handed, I handed one of these to, to Candace Bach. So they were, she's not allowed to hand it to voters, but she had somebody there to hand it to voters. Huh? Not Candace. Ginger Bach, Ginger Bach. But she, you understand, I handed them one of my things for them to give to other voters. I'm trying to get the right people voted. Okay, other announcements, other announcements. How are we doing here on announcements? I don't believe it. And most, and some of you people even have food. Here we go. Katie.
On Sunday, November 4th, at the IUPAT, which is the Painters Hall in Lachlan, there's going to be a major rally with President Berger of the AFL-CIO and AFTAB. It's very important that everybody knows that in labor numbers, AFTAB is polling extremely well. However, in general public, people are listening to the lies. And you know the old thing, we've learned about it since the election of 2016. You tell the lie enough times and people start to believe it. So the general population is starting to believe the Shabbat lies. And so therefore, so therefore, folks, we are going to have a rally at 2:00 on the 4th, AFTAB and President Berger of the AFL-CIO. And then from 3:00 until 7:00, we are going to be hitting the doors in all of AFTAB's neighborhoods. So please, everybody that you can think of, come on out. You don't have to walk a long time. And actually, we need drivers, a driver that would like drive you to the area to people jump out, hit some doors. It's really, that will be the get out the vote time. It's really important. Jill Schiller's numbers are looking really good, especially out in the rural counties. And so, you know, she needs our support too. But last Sunday, when I was doing doors in the 14s, we did 14A through I, there were some hideous door hangers by the Women for Freedom, which basically took everything that Donald Trump said at the rally on Friday and put it in written pieces on the doors. And it was the most evil piece of literature that I've seen. I kind of stole as many as I could and threw them in the garbage. But these were at union households, which was really shocking to me. So we have a lot of work to do, folks. We have a lot of work to do. So please show up at that rally. Thank you. November 4th, 2:00 at the IUPAT. As you're going down I-75 in Lachlan, you can actually see the big sign that's advertising for all the Democrats. I can give you specific directions as to how to get there if you're going to be there.
Peter wants you to fill out a card.
All right, we'll do it. Thank you.
He will fill out the card. Marlene, a purple-haired person for city coun, no, for school board, school board.
So I'm Marlena Brookfield, the candidate with the purple hair. We actually just decided last night that we're going to make that a logo. We'll get, we'll get to that point once we make a little more cash, which is the point of my announcement, is we are having the Brookfield for Board kickoff fundraiser on the 28th at 3:00 at my house. Suggested donation of $25. I will give the information to Peter, but you can also see me. I have, I have cards with my contact information. Please feel free to come and even, even just to hear what I stand for with the board, why I want to do it, why I want to get $5,000 a year to get yelled at. Come on over.
Go for it. She's worth it. She's going to lead her on our school board.
Yeah, afternoon, everyone. My name is Rafael Proffitt. I'm a Cincinnati firefighter, also a member of the Cincinnati African American Firefighter Association. Just quickly talking about issue 15. I don't know if you all know about what issue 15 is, but it is an incentive for Cincinnati public schools to become firefighters and police officers. All right, and issue 15 is a way that will recruit them into this public safety academy that the city and the school board has agreed to establish in collaboration. So we're asking your support for this. Again, this will prepare our young folks to become Cincinnati firefighters and police officers working and living in the community that they serve. So, and I know a lot of you may not know about it, although the League of Women Voters, they wrote really something, really something good in terms of the information on that. But I can take any questions, but I just wanted to throw that out there. Thank you.
Thank you. Other announcements.
I have a question. I can speak louder. I have a question. If I want to drive folks to the polls who don't have rides, does anyone know how?
Okay, I'll give you his number at the end of the meeting. If nobody has asked them, I'll go to my car and get the who and what of elections put out by the League of Women Voters and you should pick one up. I'll go out. This meeting is for information here, folks. Information. I just want to, the AARP had this. Okay, wait a second. Page eight. Why vote this fall? Here are 10 ways the midterm elections will affect older Americans. Nobody here, right? Nobody here. Sharing up Social Security, rising drug prices, Medicare funding, Medicaid grow or slow, the future of health insurance. That was really interesting about Aetna. That's Mind Healthcare at CBS. Starting a new thing going on. The future of health insurance, bolstering retirement savings, lowers retirement taxes, filling pension shortfalls, more help for caregivers and fraud targets. I feel like I'm a fraud target every time I reach a phone these days. I don't know about you guys, but it really is, gets to be kind of wearisome of all these people offering me back care or whatever.
Hi, everyone. I wanted to let you know Move to Men is having our third public meeting ever this Sunday at the First United Church at 3, I'm sorry, 536 Linton Street. It's the corner of Linton and Reading in Abingale. Unitarian. My goodness. You can tell I'm new to this. So we're going to have Peter Rose speak. You maybe already are familiar with Peter Rose. Maybe you know.
Our news person.
He's a classics literature professor, emeritus from Miami University. He also used to teach at Yale University. And I believe he knows Greek and Latin and French and Spanish and German and English. So he can tell us all kinds of things in many languages. But he is speaking about ideology. He's our, in English. He's our guest lecturer. And we would welcome you to come on out. It's from 2:00 to 4:00. And then after the election, because I know so many of you and your friends and family are busy campaigning, after the election, we're going to continue having monthly public meetings on the 3rd Sunday from 2:00 to 4:00. So if you're busy this month, I understand. Hopefully, if we don't see you this month, we'll see you next month. Michael?
Okay. Time and place.
Time and place, this Sunday, October 21st, from 2:00 to 4:00 PM at the First Unitarian Church. And the organization is Move to Men. And we will also have guest representatives from American Promise. And our, our perspective is we're trying to get big money out of politics. Big money needs to go.
Peter says he also taught in Texas at Yale University, right?
Okay. Last chance here, folks, anymore. Oh, there she goes. Do you have the things from your car?
No, but I'll bring them next week.
Okay, she'll bring them next week. That was for you, Andy, but you can still see me.
I did not know this for a long time when I started coming. Okay. I did not realize when I first started coming here about a year ago that we have a donation jar up there. And we can put, you know, at least a dollar or two if you wish to. And I don't see Terry right now. But I believe how Berger has said, half of what is in that jar will go to the woman that serves us here. So I just thought, I didn't know that for a long time and maybe, maybe we should all...
Okay, thank you. Okay, how are we doing here? Announcements. I think we've reached it. Oh my goodness. Stephanie, we're there. Here we are. For today, we have Stephanie, no, let me get this right. Summeral Dumas. Am I pronouncing that right? Dumas. And she is running for, for Hamilton County Commissioner. And she is our, no, there are two names on there. One's a Republican and one's a Democrat. And let me tell you, this is our, this is our Democrat. So I want you to know who we would like to vote for for county commissioner.
Thank you so much for inviting me. How long do I do that? Lots of questions. Okay. Let me tell you a little bit about me first. Because I think it's extremely important that you know who you're voting for. Even though I am the endorsed Democrat, it doesn't necessarily mean that I'm the best candidate, even though I am. But I was raised in Abingale. I was there for about 30 years. And then I went to Forest Park where I reside currently. I went to Walnut Hills High School. And then I traveled over to Hughes High School, received a full academic scholarship to the University of Cincinnati, left there with no school loans. That's a big deal. And then I immediately, my degree was in social work. I am currently a licensed social worker, have been for 40-plus years. Went over to Mill Creek Psychiatric Center for children. And I advocated for children for many of those years. I am also, have also been the mayor of Forest Park for 12 years. Six years as vice mayor, six years as mayor. I went to the Village of Lincoln Heights and I was a village manager there for four years. Little bit of controversy, I guess, maybe during my second year, as we look at ethics and integrity. And I looked at what was going on in the police department and the fact that we have, we had lots of lawsuits and we could not get our department insured. So because of that, I disbanded the police department. And we brought in the sheriff. And the sheriff department has been working there ever since. I left there in 2015. I was there, as I said, for four years. The longest manager ever in about 30 years. The longest manager had been there about a year and a half. And I was determined I was not going to leave until I made an impact. And I believed that I did. I also have written two books, actually three. Two have been published. One is called The Politics of Politics: Let the Games Begin. And I wrote that after I ran in 2006 for county commissioner. I did not win, but I did receive a third of the vote. So that was a great thing. So I'm hoping some of those people are still around to vote for me now. So and then I wrote an additional book, Perpetuating a Perpetrator. And I am a survivor of domestic violence. And I wrote a book to help those who are in the midst of domestic violence. Currently, I have another book, which is a Christian book for young children. Waiting for an illustrator for that. Also was in the ASME Union for, well, actually am as a retired person, for 25 years. So I have gotten the endorsements of every union you can think of, AFL-CIO. I mean, you did have to interview, so they didn't just give it to me. So ASME, the Building Union, the Trade Union, the Construction Union. I heard you say CFT. They just endorsed me. Let's see. Bishop Bobby Hilton, who was my bishop, he endorsed me. Lots of political people. So I have, as we go on, more and more endorsements. But I just want to make it very clear. And I made it very clear to them, I am a different type of Democrat. When I say that, I can't be balked. I'm not doing anything in the dark room. We have the Democrats do it. We know Republicans do all that. But letting people know that what you see is what you get. Ethics and integrity are top on the list for me. So if you give me your vote and I stand on an issue, I will continue to stand on it. Not that I will not question things that are being done. I am a researcher. I love to research. And so I used to say that I'm going to work outside of the box. But I don't say that anymore. I'm going to work inside the box. And what that means for me is to look at the issues, the concerns, the projects, the programs, the policies that have currently been done by our two great Democrats that are there and see how I can help to look at it in a different way. Provide my suggestions, creativity. I'm a creative thinker and I think I can do that. Just to be very transparent with all of you. When I looked at the budget and I was wondering at what point, we were 28 million in the hole. And now I hear it's 29.1. And that's basically because no adjustments have been made currently. They're looking at adjustments to the budget. But as a resident, I was wondering at what point was 10 million in the hole or 15 in the hole. So that was a major concern to me. We know the state funding has been cut and I understand that. But we have to be, I guess, more aggressive when we look at ways that we can improve the budget and how monies are spent. So I'm really concerned about hitting the ground on my first day to look at that budget. Another one of my concerns is homelessness. And it's not just homelessness. Homelessness, homelessness, I think, is a part of economic empowerment. So I'm not just looking at where people are staying or not staying, but how can we, I guess, give a hand down to bring some people up so they can work and earn their own monies and be stable and have their own families? That's a big concern for me. Of course, healthcare is a major concern for me, that we make sure that people that need healthcare are able to get the healthcare that they need and to do it in a reasonable way. So when we talk about 911 system, I've always, that system has always been somewhat antiquated. We need to look at that. And we talk about issue one. I go to guess for issue one. And the reason for that, it can impact... And the reason for that, it can impact the overcrowdedness of the correctional system. And if we can help people and provide rehab and things like that, I think that's a great thing. So I think issue one is a great thing. Let me think what else you need to know about me. I don't know how many know about my primary. Who heard about my primary? Oh, good. One person. Okay. So anyway, oh, no, he heard about it. So anyway, yeah, during the primary, I was the unendorsed Democrat. The party had already decided who they wanted and that was fine. Because in 2006, I was unendorsed, but I ran anyway. So I ran this time. I was the only candidate that was unendorsed that won. And I won by 7,200 votes. So people, thank you. So I do the ground game. I go out and I meet people and I let people know who I am and what I stand for. So now I am, of course, the endorsed Democrat. Very proud of that. And so we're going to move forward. Our numbers look very good. About 45 days ago, and they looked, they polled people to see how they would vote. And my opponent had 42% of the vote. And then they looked at me and I had 42% of the vote. So it's my understanding, he is a little afraid because he has over a half a million in his coffers and he's trying to figure out. She beat me with $465. And 450 were for signs. So people were saying, you have signs everywhere. Well, we did have signs everywhere. Because every three days, we'd go at night and pick up the signs and put them in another neighborhood. So that's how... But luckily, since I won the primary, people are now donating more. We're able to have more than 100 signs. So I'm just really excited about that. Not that we won't still move some. But I'm trying to think what else you need to know about me. I write grants for the federal government. I review grants for the federal government. And when we look at trying to pull more money into the county, not that I will write any grants, but I will direct people to where grants may be. They just approved, the federal government just sent 35 million to the county for transportation issues as it relates to bus issues. Transportation is a major issue for me. I live in Forest Park and only half of Forest Park has a bus service. And I'm on the half that doesn't. And if you look historically at me, when I was the mayor, I was the only one that agreed that we should have improved transportation. So, is that 20 minutes? I wanted to tell you a little bit about this. Somebody wanted to know about this. I carry this around everywhere I go. I had a... Because I loved it to my... I am good and strong. I can do this job. I ran into my... Oh, yeah, that's right. Is it okay if I...
Yeah.
I carry this around with me. I've been carrying it since the primary. And believe it or not, it's a pretty old ball. And the date is July the 12th, 1984. The reason why this is significant is because I had my son in March of 1984. So four months later, I was playing semi-pro softball. And I was out and I was three for five. I had two singles, four RBIs and one home run. And I know I was sliding like Pete Rose. I know that. So the reason why I carry this is so you know what type of person I am with the tenacity and the drive that I have to make things happen. And when I found this ball, I really could not believe that it was only four months after I had my child. So the reason why I continue to carry it is because I hit a home run then. And my plan now is to hit a grand slam. And that's why I continue to carry it. Ms. House, yeah. Let me think what's significant that you guys need to know. I don't want to be too rhetorical. Is that correct? Rhetorical? Well, you have to see what I'm going to say first. Is that correct? But I carry something in my heart as I campaign. And I'm sorry to have my back to you. And it's something that Reverend Dr. Martin Luther King Jr. once said. And I carried it when I ran my primaries. And what he said about voting, yeah, it's very important to register and to vote. But he said, "We must do more than register. More than vote. We must select leaders that embody the values that we can respect. The moral and ethical principles that make us stand up and applaud with enthusiasm." How do you stand up? And I am one of those leaders.
Would you support countywide bus system? And how would you get the commissioners to work with Better Bus Coalition? So that we could have a countywide bus system?
Excuse me. I think that's a great question. Because the question came, you know, the county should, the suburban area should be paying into this transportation issue. And I totally agree. I mean, that would include me if I'm still out in Forest Park. But I think everyone needs to pay their part. It's a very expensive system. And when we talked at a debate, my opponent and I, there's a 19th century project that's been developed to, because as I said earlier, our system is so antiquated. But the question that I had, we want to be transparent, once again, and don't make people think that we can change the system overnight because we cannot. So I would be in agreement. And I think everybody needs to pay their fair share.
My question has to do with your comment about the deficit. What do you think is, usually when people talk about the deficit, that means cuts to services. What services do you think would be necessary to cut in order to deal with the deficit? And also, as county commissioner, what is the most important part of that job, in your opinion?
Sure.
Besides the deficit?
Sure. When they look at cuts, when I look at cuts, the discussion has been about the sheriff department and downsizing the sheriff department. You know, typically, public safety is the vast majority of a budget anyway. So we have to really look at, are we able to keep people safe and still decrease the amount of people, the police officers that are on the street? And I think that is going to happen, from what I'm hearing. That there may be some cuts in that area. They've already taken some cuts. But as far as me, what I see as important, I look as a social worker. I look at JFS. They're doing great things. But as I analyze the things that they do, they're like three departments doing the same thing.
What is JFS?
Jobs and Family Services. I'm sorry. I apologize. So they have lots of departments that are doing duplicate services. So how can we combine those services and at the same time use the skills of those people that are in the social service area in another area in the county? I'm not saying we, you know, we don't want to cut jobs, but we're in a deep hole. People have even asked me, why do you want to do it now? Why don't you wait till they get the budget balance? But I really think I can make an impact on that. So it's going to be a hard discussion. I got an announcement yesterday. They just hired a gentleman for economic inclusion. And I actually know him. The commissioner just approved Economic Inclusion Coordinator. And so I know the question that the public is going to say, how are you hiring a new person? And you may have to cut other people. So I'm sure that, I guess, the opinion will be that he can generate more money for the county by pulling more people in to do jobs. So I think there definitely will be some cuts. And that's what Denise and Todd and Monziel have said. They're going to have to. It's too deep of a hole to be in. So do you...
I'm also curious about, oh, I'm also curious about the position the state plays in all this. The state has not restored funding from the recession. And I would like to have your position on how do you plan to work and get that funding returned? Because that more than, I think, though, there's always this idea that money is being recklessly spent. But we have had unprecedented long-term cuts from the state and the state has to step up.
Well, my prayer, my hope is that the new governor will make a difference. That Corinra will make a difference. He has indicated that he's aware of how the state funding has been cut. And that's one of his first priorities. So that's one thing that can happen and I believe will happen. And there's some hint, I'm not sure, and everybody's not really telling you what the rainy day fund has inside of it. But there is money in the rainy day fund. The rumor says that they're trying to hold on to it so when the Republicans run again, some kind of way you can do some things with money, but that's not appropriate. So I believe a new mayor, a new governor will make a major difference. Because he sees how much money has been taken away.
So as county commissioner, something that will probably come across your desk will be renegotiating the lease with the Bengals over Paul Brown Stadium. I was only a little one then, but I remember hearing from the adults around me how terrible a deal it was. And now that I am an adult and did some research on it, how terrible a deal it was for Cincinnati Public Schools. Our district has never been made whole by the payments they've given us in lieu of taxes. And honestly, Hamilton County lost out on that deal. When that comes across your desk, what are some things you want to do to handle that?
Well, this came up when I had the debate with my opponent and he was saying that they are negotiating the contract for the stadium. I don't believe it's going to happen. The reason why I say that, the people are so invested on the other side to continue that money flow. And I'm not being pessimistic, but I'm being realistic. And I think it's going to be very hard to change up that contract because for that to happen, somebody basically has to lose. And it's the stadium people. Even though it really is a win-win for us, the residents, but I just don't see it happening. You made me remember something too, that I want to definitely not leave here without you knowing. And wherever I am, the number one, one of the number one things I say is when you vote for Stephanie Summero Dumas, you get a full-time commissioner. My opponent works full-time at GE as a supervisor. So not only works there, he supervises groups of people. And then supposedly, he is a full-time commissioner. And my thought is, you can't serve two masters. You love one and hate the other. So at what point, with all these issues going on in the county, at what point was there an issue with the budget? And he said, "Well, I'm going to put this on hold and I'm going to deal with these GE issues." With me, you don't have to worry about that. I've been retired since I was 50. And that is almost 13 years ago. So my whole focus, I know I look pretty good, yeah. But my whole focus will be the Hamilton County Commissioner position. And even the mayor of Forest Park stood up and talked for me. And he said, he knows me. I work night and day, day and night. I do my best work at 2:00 and 3:00 in the morning. And then Dusty Rhodes stood up and talked about my work ethic. And so nothing will change. I will even tell you that when Eric Dieters was down there for about a year, year and a half, he was appointed, he's a Republican, and he was on the commission, I met with him after he had been there about six months. And the reason why I met with him, because it wasn't about being a commissioner. I had no thought of running. But I knew that I had ideas, solutions that may help the county. And so he set up a meeting and we met together for almost an hour and a half. And then he asked me, he said, "So what are you doing now?" And I said, "I'm retired." And he said, "Oh, no, you don't need to be retired. You need to be out there." So I saw him the other day. I said, "You're the reason why I'm running." So he didn't like that. But that's only, that's only to say that it's not about a position. It's not about me. It's about us and how we can make things better and we can be one. So that, it sounds kind of kumbaya, but it's the truth. Another thing you guys need to know, if I could just make one other point. The county commission was established in 1790. The commission board was established in 1796. So that means there's been 222 years, there's never been a person of color on the commission, male or female. When you walk through that door, you have an opportunity to make history. So I'm not, I, of course, represent everyone. But I think it's very good that the commission is reflective of the people that it serves. And we know men think different than women. Black people think different than white people, Asians, Hispanic. And so we need some of that diversity on the board. So I just wanted to let you know that you can make history.
Hi. I was, hello. I was just wondering, we're sort of struggling in the city with tax abatements. Does that affect Hamilton County too?
Yes, it does. Because there was a question that, it's funny, most of the things you're bringing up was brought up at our meeting. Are we giving too many tax abatements? Are we giving too many tax incentives? And so we have people that come and build or possess a building or start a business and then it takes 10, 12, 20 years before we get any taxes. So the evaluation of whether or not we need to continue, of course, we need to continue because we want to attract people to come to our county. But are we giving them too much of a good deal? That's the question.
Not only the neighborhoods that don't need this tax abatement. That's where the tax abatement is strongest. I mean, I live in Hyde Park. And Hyde Park and Mount Lookout are very big on tax abatements. And originally, my thought was, I think, it was given so that they would build up neighborhoods that needed it. And that's not happening.
Well, and that's true. In Lincoln Heights, I wrote a, I'm going to sit down. I wrote a grant for $280. She's okay. She's used to me. I wrote a grant for $280. And that came from the Port Authority. And it's funny, even when you have the money sometimes. I had that money for two years before I was able to spend a penny of because I was told that Aunt Sarah, that's her house, she'll be back. So we don't want to do anything with this house as it relates to demolition or anything like that. Well, how long has she been gone? 30 years, but she's coming back. So what I'm saying is, that's a whole nother level of, when you have money that you can do and build up without the tax abatement, we need to use some of that free money. And there's a lot out there. Yes, sir.
Speaking of contracts and kumbaya, what are your thoughts about the MSD contract between the city and county?
You know, the way I describe it is MSD is a hot potato. And the reason why I say that, the county owns it, the city operates it. Who does that? What I mean by that, you know, I buy a car and I'm not able to drive it. Somebody else drives it. So I think the solution for MSD, one of the solutions is for the city and the county to come to some agreement, which they're, from what I'm reading, not able to agree on a lot of things. Who's going to take this baby and do what needs to be done? Who's going to take this baby and do what needs to happen? And nobody wants to let go because everybody is getting a benefit from MSD. But I think the biggest solution would be to have one entity operate and own the entity because it's just too much frustration. We know the contract for MSD ended in April. Now there is going to be a continuance and it's supposed to be some court, going to court about it and all this. And we have problems now. And I think it was meant for me, I was coming from the FOP, I don't know, maybe a month ago. And it started raining. And as I'm going down Central Parkway, right where that Clifton Hill is, I don't know the name of it, that water was coming down like Niagara Falls. I actually thought I was not going to live to be a commissioner. I mean, I was on the phone, I said, Mom, I'm on Central Park, I can't, I couldn't turn around. And it was so, it was really meant for me. I know in Forest Park, we have a lot of issues in the basements and things like that. But to note that those sewer systems are not working the way they should, I really got an up-close-and-personal look at that. So that's something that definitely needs to be resolved as quickly as possible. All these issues have been, I believe, laying dormant for so, so long. Not that people haven't been doing what they need to do, but there's so many areas or issues to look at that it's, I'm not, you know, when I won the primary, they said it was a miracle in Hamilton County. So I'm not a miracle worker, but they said, if I win in November, it'll be a miracle of biblical proportions. So I told them, get ready for the miracle. Because we know miracles happen every day. But there's a lot of issues that are going to take some time to work on. And so I'm aware of that. But one thing you can say about me, I will be working.
Two more questions?
Do you know Charmaine McGuffey at the county jail?
McGuffey sounds familiar, but I don't, oh, yeah.
She was, yeah, I remember her. She was head of the county jail for a long time.
I have some pictures with her that we took, yeah.
I thought she was wonderful. She brought in all kinds of activities and all for the inmates. And entirely different from the way it had been before she came in. But she was run out after about three years. And what, I mean, and it's way overcrowded now. I can't imagine being there, living there as an inmate. Is there any, we're bringing up all kinds of things that seem to have no answers. I'm not saying that has an answer. But I was at a big rally for immigrants and realized that they're being taken straight to the jail if they're picked up. That's what we were protesting about. But I mean, what do you think about all that?
Well, I think issue one will help with the overcrowding. If it passes, it's a lot of move afoot to try to make sure it does not pass, but.
Right. That will help.
That question came to me on a questionnaire or something, but I think issue one would certainly help. And McGuffey, she took a picture with me and I was asking her, I said, will you get in trouble for taking a picture? So she took a picture with me, a great person. The sheriff and I, I will say, have a great relationship, but not to the point where I won't question him. As I was saying earlier, the sheriff department came to Lincoln Heights. And so when I went to meet with him, when I, as I was running, and he couldn't endorse me, but he said, he's waiting for someone to put a microphone in his mouth to talk about how I changed the region. When I say changed the region, just when we got the sheriffs in there and then Woodline got involved and Glendale and Lockland and that. So we have a good relationship, a good enough relationship that we can talk about things. And so, I mean, that's the first step. You may not like me, but at least we can respect each other and talk on a level that'll bring some changes and some solutions.
Okay, final question. Make it a good one.
No, I don't believe it. I don't believe it.
And there are also some signs back there if anybody wants to.
We have, we have, we have signs and we can take them home. I have to tell you, I've had four Avtad signs taken from my little triangle in the Edgemont. I keep bringing them out. I'm going to get some more. And I'll put one of yours there, huh?
Thank you very much.
Ladies and gentlemen, we have done it again. Wait.
A comment. I just want to thank you for running.
Oh, thank you so much.
I was so impressed with your taking your signs and switching them around. So I know you're a person who's very careful with resources. So that was a very telling story. Thank you.
Thank you so much. I'm the one who got her back here. I just wanted to know. Yes, question?
This is probably not just a question for you, but for anybody. I was, this may not be a question to anybody, but anybody who can tell me. I was so dismayed last week to learn, and correct me if I heard wrong, but that the Ohio Democrats are not supporting issue one. This is so, I mean, I just can't believe it. And so what do I, as an individual Democrat, do to let them know? Or what do we, as Democrats in this county?
Go ahead.
What do we do to let them know our disgust?
I think they're aware of that. Hamilton County Democratic Party did emphasize to the Ohio Democratic Party that we wanted a yes. So.
Email David Tepper.
They've done all that. So there's just a difference of opinion. And they didn't, they didn't volunteer to get a speaker to us. I mean, we've been working really hard at that. We really, we really did. And when they really wouldn't. We've got Stephanie doing it. Thank you. Thank you for coming and thank you for being good here. Ladies and gentlemen, thank you for being here. Thank you for being a wonderful audience. Thank you for coming. Thank you for coming. Thank you. You are so good. Thank you.